Welcome to tonight's Southwest Zone Town Hall meeting. Tonight's topic is diversity and inclusion. Moderator will be Angela Uno and the Town Hall meeting will be a roundtable style discussion. Angela will ask each panelist to head away on a few questions. The panelists are encouraged to share their feelings, ask, ask the other panelists questions. And this is a Zoom webinar. So for those that are attending the session, please feel free to ask via the Q and A feature. And I will make sure your question gets asked. This is going to be recorded and posted at the txwaterpole.com website for those that could not participate live. I want to thank all the panelists for taking the time to be with us today. And I hope that this will be the first of many discussions moving forward. I'm going to step aside for Angela. The floor is yours.
Awesome. So today we're speaking to various coaches, athletes and club admins from around the state who identify as people of color. With what's going on in the country, the time is now to have these hard discussions. And we need to start changing things in water polo. Water polo has historically been a non POC space or a non person of color space. And today's conversation will be an opportunity to reflect this reality. Our panelists will share, discuss their stories, challenges, and give input on possible solutions moving forward. As we enter this brave space, my hope is that we reflect on inequities within this sport and that we are able to find ways to challenge this narrative. So it's been a true honor to be able to talk to each and every single one of you and find a little bit more about your story. And I'm excited to hear more today during this conversation. And so, yeah, I'm so excited to get started. I do want to start with introducing our guest panelists. We have Brenda Villa here. She's part of the USA Water Polo Racial Equity and Reform Task Force. It's also co-chaired by Chief High Performance Officer John Abdu. And so I wanted to turn it over to Brenda for a little bit before we start on the round table to share a little bit about the task force as well as just some thoughts and feelings you have towards diversity in water polo.
Thank you, Angela. It's an honor from I've been thinking about, I think, since I realized that I was one of very few Latinx women to make it to the top of the sport. And yeah, so I'm lucky to be chairing the Racial Equity and Reform Task Force with John Abdu of USA Water Polo. And at the moment, we're stakeholders in the organization to make sure that we have different voices represented. I am, I've been hearing lots of stories. A lot of people have been reaching out. I've been heartbroken to hear so many of these stories, of our stories. It's made me reflect on my experiences. And it's made me reflect that at times I've dealt with sexism over racism or that my gender was something that I had to lead with first in this space. And it didn't allow me to, to hear the racism. And I think as I raised in the ranks of USA Water Polo, I think the racism was out of earshot. So that was a privilege that I guess you could say privilege that I had. You know, as I became one of the top players in the country, people just weren't saying it to my face. I know that it was there. So I just, I'm here to listen to the stories of Texas and I'm here to support. And I want to just say thank you for you guys opening the space and to the panelists for being vulnerable and sharing this because this is how we're going to move the needle is by having these honest conversations and sharing these stories that people think don't happen in their proximate community, but it's there. So we're going to make it real for everyone. So thank you and I'm, and I'm here to support.
Thank you so much, Brenda. Yeah, so we're here to hear those vulnerable stories. And so before we get started, I wanted to make sure that everybody knew who everyone in the panel was. And so we're going to do some introductions. This is kind of a long list, but I think you have it in front of you too. So your name, your involvement in water polo, your job or education, or whatever you're doing right now outside of water polo, ethnic background, connection to Texas and any activism or social justice work you participate in. And I'm going to start with Sophia.
Hi, my name is Sophia. And I played on Thunder when I was in like middle school and high school. And I play in college now at a school called Sienna College. It's in like way upstate New York. And I live in Texas. And I'm actually a multicultural, multicultural studies minor in school. And I'm in our Latinx, Latinx club as well.
And then also how do you identify your ethnic background?
I am Puerto Rican.
And then we're going to turn it over to Chris Ellis.
I'm Chris Ellis. So I'm the head coach for Saffir Water Polo Club, assistant coach at St. Agnes. And then I coached the Cadet Girls team for the Southwest Zone. And then I also ref off and on during high school season when they need me. I'm sorry, what else was I supposed to say?
Your ethnic background, connection to Texas and any activism or social justice work you do?
I'm biracial, so I'm white and black. But when I walk onto a pool deck, like I identify as like a black man, like. And I'm from Texas. I played at Iona College up in New York too, so I know where Sienna is. Played there for three years and then I came back and kept coaching, teaching the kids.
Thank you. Jonathan.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Landero. From FAR, so it's, I served the FAR San Juan Alamo Independent School District as well as in collaboration with the city of FAR. And we started the very first water polo club here in the Rio Grande Valley. I'm the aquatics director for the school district. And I'm also in the process of beginning a nonprofit organizations that's going to provide either free swim lessons, quality swim lessons, or very low cost to our community. I'm a Mexican immigrant, so I moved here when I was about six or seven years old. And so I've been here for most part of my life. But I consider myself a Mexican American.
Thank you. Edwin? Edwin, I think you're on mute.
There we go. My name is Edwin Barrera. I coach at Storm at North Houston Storm Water Polo. I also referee for the zone and the state. Let's see, I identify as a Hispanic male, was born in Peru, South America. Types of activism that I participate in, I, in, in my current life, be it that I'm a new father, I, I don't have much time. But when there's a cause, I'm always there to, you know, try to make it right.
Awesome. Thank you, Edwin. Zane?
Hey, everybody. So yeah, I'm Zane Bilal. Involvement in water polo, so been playing since I was seven. Went to Sterling High School, which apparently a lot of people don't know about anymore. Went to USC for water polo, played on the national team at like the junior level. Coached for like Viper Pigeon and I coached a storm for a little bit too. Then played with Hops once in a while. Right now I'm a medical student, my third year, going on to my fourth ethnic background. So my, my mom is Egyptian, my dad's African American. But I kind of like what Chris was saying, you kind of get identified or you identify yourself more or identify myself more as an African American. Terms of activism on the NAACP member. I'm also a member of Student National Medical Association, which is an association here that provides scholarships for incoming first year medical students who are of color and have socioeconomic difficulties.
Thank you. We're going to go to Ahmad.
Hey, I'm Ahmad Zahra, coach over at West Houston Water Polo, Viper Pigeons. Went to school at U of H and then just played a club there, did a lot of club for Hops Masters team as well. And really just started coaching as soon as I went into college to help them, the West Houston Viper Pigeons outbid and then just grew to love coaching. And I mean, I've enjoyed it ever since. Currently, I'm actually helping run our family business. It's a food truck commissary. So that's been interesting, a little eye opening. As, as far as activism goes, fortunately, I haven't joined in anything. I'm always there to support my friends because they're a little bit more into the active scenes. Anytime they're going somewhere or, you know, going to do something, going to a speaker event or something, I'll, I'll tag along, of course, just to see what, you know, everyone else is doing, just to hear everyone else's voices. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. And then we lastly have Morgan.
Hello. I don't know if it, did it switch? I don't know if it's me. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. My name is Morgan Madrid. I currently am a referee. I coach on and off for Joe when he can talk me into teaching little kids. I played in college at CSU for a year or almost two years. I currently am a warehouse manager. Everything is crazy with COVID, so we've been working 100 hours all the time. I identify as biracial, so my mom is white and my dad is Hispanic. Or as we recently found out through DNA testing, we're actually more Native American, but we have no idea who we belong to. So right now that's in the wind, but some sort of native. And then I think that's about it.
Great. I did realize I didn't introduce myself, so I'll do a little bit of introductions for myself. I am Angela Uno. I am the co-zone head referee for the Southwest Zone as well as the North Texas signer. A lot of my involvement is, is reffing. Hi, John. And sometimes I pretend like I can play master's water polo. I float there. And then I am a teacher. I teach government and psychology in Dallas ISD. And so clearly I'm very involved in terms of with working with kids and also getting them involved and wanting them to work in the political scene. I identify as Japanese American. My grandpa was in the internment camp, so it's something that has been kind of, this social justice work has been near and dear to my heart and near and dear to my family for a while. My connection to Texas, I actually moved to Texas to go to SMU in 2016 and I haven't left since. Ironically, I'm in California right now, but I haven't left since then. And then activism, social justice work, I'm big into disability rights and disability activism, women's rights and feminism. And I'm just in social justice work as much as I can get it, as much as I can get involved with it, I try to do as much as possible. So yeah. Before we get started, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the norms of the conversation. This is a roundtable discussion meant for interaction between y'all. I am here to moderate, but I don't have to always ask the questions. If you have a question that comes to mind for other panelists, please do ask them and find a way to keep the interaction going. We also have quite a few people on the panel. And so I wanted to make sure that all voices are heard and just be aware of the time that you're taking. And then lastly, this is a recorded conversation online. I think it's absolutely essential that we're honest and vulnerable about our experiences, whether positive or negative, but because it's recorded online, doxing is a possibility. And so please avoid using names or club names if, if that comes up. You can always share your experience and how it felt to you, but because that person or that club can't be here to defend themselves, just be aware of, be wary of using names. And so to get started, I wanted to start with the question of how has your identity as a person of color impacted your experience in water polo? What specific stories come to mind when, when it comes to being a person of color?
I can start with that. It's pretty, pretty simple for me, I guess. 99.9% of my experiences have been easy, awesome, amazing people. But I feel like, you know, most of the teams I've been on, I've kind of been the only person of color. But save a few. And so it kind of feels like sometimes you're the, the person who's having to set the rules and the boundaries of how far people can take conversation or how far people can like, how freely people can talk about like race and stuff like that. So it can, it can kind of put you on edge and it can kind of make you seem like the mad person in the room all the time, you know? And so one particular experience that I had, I guess I can't, I'm not trying not to dox, but one particular experience was we were sitting at a water polo table at a dining hall. There was a football team across at another table and it was 2008 election. President Obama was talking on the TV and he said something and the football team like was pretty excited and they got happy. And one of the, one of my teammates said, oh, I'm surprised that they can understand him because he's not speaking Ybonyx. And I was just like, what? Excuse me? Like what, what is, what compelled you to say that? And then kind of just got into an argument with him. It ended up where he was saying, oh, I'm not racist. I have black friends. Like it's that whole kind of like conversation and that whole kind of thing where people feel like because they can associate themselves with someone, they, they can associate themselves with someone of color that they can say certain things and that, that means that they're not racist or that means that they have the, the freedom to say certain things. So I think people just need to understand it's just because you have friends or you have people of color that you associate yourself with, doesn't mean that you get a freedom to kind of say what you want. And it doesn't mean that you can't be racist in a sense. There you go.
I can go next. For the most part, I've had a pretty unique experience because the valley is about, you know, if, if I want to be real accurate, it's, it's got to be above 95%, but I'd say it's closer to 99%. So it's really hard to experience too much racism within our own community. It only really happens when we get out. And so the limited experience that we have in water polo in general, you know, has been surprising. But it, it's also been, since Texas is really kind of on the forefront of developing the sport, you know, outside of California, of course. We've, we've received a lot of, you know, warm welcome for the most part, but we have had some experiences and not necessarily through USA Warpool tournaments, more so on another type of tournaments where we went to regional competitions. And, you know, some of our darker skinned kids were called the N word because they felt that they were maybe being too aggressive. Our girls were also called, you know, criminals during one of the game. And so, so it was just, it was really, really eye opening for a lot of our kids that, you know, most of them have never left their hometown. So they have no idea what it's like even outside of our own hometown. So for them to kind of experience it, even though it was kind of shocking to them, I found that it was actually also beneficial because it made them realize that there's a world outside of the Rio Grande Valley and the habits that they, they, that they need to do to take their game to the next level. And not just, and break the stereotypes that exist that label us, not just as a Hispanic community, but as the Rio Grande Valley itself has a stereotype, has really helped the team and the community take it to the, to the next level. And so experiencing those sort of things, you know, being asked, oh, well, do you guys speak Mexican? Or are you guys, you know, good swimmers because you, you swim across the border? You know, those little comments have, have come across whenever we've gone, not just in water polo, but, but swimming itself. And so I tell these kids that they got to use that, that experience to break those stereotypes that, that are normally, you know, given to us.
Jonathan, you, you, you mentioned that you're darker athletes and the, the names that they get called. And that's something that I've been self reflecting on because I realized that there is a lot of colorism in the Latino community, the Latinx community. And me being someone that tans a lot, has a lot of melanin in me, right? It's something that I remember growing up and hearing all these mixed messages from, from other team members. And we're predominantly Hispanic Latino team. But there were these comments like, oh, you look so much nicer when you don't tan. Or little, these little microaggressions that I really wasn't understanding. And it's, it's been like a journey of self reflection the last couple of months of just reliving like and exploring everything. So I know that I've been in a lot of discussions with other fellow friends and team members of, of exploring this topic of racism. Because everyone has been saying like, we can't be racist, right? We're, we're Latino, we're minority. And it's like, no, we can be. So it is a way of just having all of us take like an internal glance to self reflect on little things that we can all just do better. Because we can all be in a moment, I think racist, like our action, our words can be racist in that moment. I don't think it's, it's a stagnant thing, but this is like the internal work that I'm doing at the moment.
Going off of colorism also, I wanted to have a pointed question to Morgan because we've had a couple of conversations about this. And being biracial, you also have a privilege of being white passing. And that in, in certain times, people can assume that you're white and then treat you differently because of that assumption. And so could you talk a little bit more about your experience with being white passing?
Yeah, for sure. So obviously like right now I'm not super tan. I've been inside most of the summer, but during the winter months, I'm considered white passing in the sense that I, I don't have an accent. Like I don't, I grew up speaking a little bit of Spanish, but I don't have like a Spanish accent. I speak English, like that was my first language. But there were experiences whenever I was playing where like towards the summer months when I would go outside, that everyone would be like, oh, you look so nice. You're so lucky. You tan well. Like it must be nice to have this great skin. And then I would bring up this thing like, oh, well, my parents are biracial. And like I would show them a picture of my parents. And then at that point, it was more of like a, oh, like we feel like we learned you as a person this way. And now you don't really fit inside the box of how we assumed you were. And I don't think people's experiences with me ever really changed in the sense of like, oh, now you're not one of us. But it was definitely one of those moments where you could see people like, oh, that explains a lot. And then I've also seen like, for instance, like once I show a picture of my dad, who is a dark skinned Hispanic person, the first question is, well, where is he from? So then that's like a whole other thing that I have to deal with, like in the sense of my dad is now being questioned as being someone who's from here. So then it's like, I have to prove now that, no, I am like you guys. I'm not like, I'm not external to this group. Like I'm still just me, but it does definitely put them as in the, this isn't quite how we thought of you to begin with.
Kind of going off of that a little bit, that exact same thing happens to me all the time. Like my mom is this like super pale blonde girl. And I remember when I was little, she would come to school and people would be like, oh, like, are you adopted? And I'd be like, oh no, like my dad's just late. And then like my dad would walk in and he's very Puerto Rican and very Hispanic looking. And they'd be like, oh, like that totally makes sense. And then like during water polo, there was a time at a tournament where I think something had happened and like a coach or a referee had to go talk to my mom. And they actually went and found somebody like Hispanic looking who wasn't my mom. And everybody was super confused and my mom finally came out and was like, oh, like that's my daughter. So.
Yeah, kind of in the same vein, I don't remember where we were playing, but something had happened and the game started getting aggressive. And at the time I was a little bit more tan and some, someone who we were playing with, their daughter was on the other team. And the guy, her dad, I think in the stands turned to my dad and was like, that must be your kid. And she is a B word, blah, blah, blah. And started going off on my dad on like a racial tirade. Just, and just assumed that we were together because I was also kind of dark at the time. Like it's crazy, the assumptions that people can make based off of how we look on the outside.
Edwin, I wanted to, I know that we got to talk a little bit about growing up in LA or LA County, Orange County, where you were in the midst of, of racial tensions at that time. And so I wanted to bring in that experience of how did that affect your experience of water polo in that context?
Yeah, for sure. And Brenda, I mean, she was, she was there too, in the sense that I used to live in Montebello. And this was like 88, 86, 87. And, and you know, it's, it's the pride that you have out there. It's different than what you would have because when I immigrated over from Peru in 85, it was, oh, you must be Mexican. It's like, no, no, I'm South American. And, you know, we are blessed with this golden tanning skin that, you know, people start thinking, oh, because that's just how they were. And that was in the eighties and then here come the nineties. And the nineties is a little bit cooler because now the whole ethnic thing comes through. And it's like ethnic, for us, it's normal. And when I mean us, and maybe I'm being a little bit divisive. I include the black Americans, the Hispanic, the Dominicans, like the Puerto Ricans, all of us. And, and, and it's not of, out of, out of want. It's, it's out of, hey, this is the, this is, this is what you're being allowed to see and it's which are not being allowed to see. So then you kind of start, you know, creating a bubble. And, and, and that's, that's what happened. I mean, you're talking about, you know, being called the cherry picker because you know, that's what the Mexicans would do out there. And it's, and again, living in Montebello and going to a, a school that was like predominantly Hispanic and we were the majority. And even in that case, the few, I was saying maybe like 30% of the, of the school would be maybe white. And you have Hispanic and you have maybe a little bit of Asian. But like I went to a school where name drop, Oscar De La Hoya went to school at. So like, that was awesome. And, and when he came up in that 96 Olympics and wins that gold, I mean, that, that was huge. That was huge. And then here comes, like I said, here comes rolling, we're in the nineties. And, and again, it's like the culture changes and, and sometimes people want to go with it. People don't. And the things that I hear Morgan saying and, and that young lady that's up in, up in Northern New York. I'm like, man, you would think those things wouldn't continue. And you see it. And as a player and then turn into a coach and being put in positions in Cali, you know, because I had, I had, you know, I had, I had African American players, some that currently still play and you're just beast. And athleticism, sport is the truest form of passion. And when you don't have anything else, you turn ugly and then you start saying things. And it's not really you, maybe it's in the heat of, of the battle, but it's always, it's always there and you can pick it. And that's what we need to, you know, as a society, it's like, yeah, we got to be better. And, and again, nineties, nineties, I don't, not to be, you know, discriminative on age, but like a lot of you guys, were you even born in the nineties or 2000s? And that's what you guys don't see. It's like, it's sad to see that we're kind of going through it again and we didn't really learn it. And it's, and it's my age parents. It's, it's people my age that teach these high school kids, you know, to be. And it kind of goes back generationally. And I just, I think it's, 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 you know, Zane, you, you, you know, you kind of connect with what you say. Because when you're the only Hispanic kid in the group of OY kids and some Asians, you're like, ah, look at that beaner over there. Oh, dude, like hello. And that's, that's the thing. And yeah, you go out and California sun, I mean, ask, ask, ask Brenda, that will seriously darken you up. And man, it, it, it's, it's, it's just an unfortunate reality, but we're getting, I think we've, we're getting better. And I don't want to hog up the. I think we've, we're, we're getting better. And I don't want to hog up the conversation. But you know, everyone on this panel is pretty brave to do what they're doing.
I think that's a really good transition point for talking about, um, solutions. And I wanted to kind of split it up because it can get really overwhelming to talk about solutions when it comes to a huge topic like racism. And so I wanted to start on an interpersonal level, which is something that feels a lot more controllable for us, I think. On an interpersonal level, I know a lot of us are coaches. A lot of us are club admin who have control over that, that kind of day-to-day interaction that you'll have with players, with parents, with referees even. What can we start doing differently? What, what were negative experiences for you that we can learn from? What are positive experiences that you can learn from? So, uh, yeah, what, what are the ways that we can change those interpersonal interactions that we have?
Uh, yeah, I'll go first with this one. Um, so as like a head coach, like club admin, I have to deal with a lot of, like especially big things with me is reffing. Like I have a lot of kids of color on my team who I feel get reffed in hard way, like harder, right? And like, I've even heard refs say, well, like their skin's darker. I can see what's happening under the water. Like you hear stuff like that, right? Like you hear from other coaches and it's just, um, I don't know, it's very frustrating. And then back to like what Zane was saying earlier, how you have to be the one setting boundaries, like also at the same time, as the only black guy on a pool deck. Like whatever I do reflects on so much more than just me, right? And so like, sometimes I get carded way easier than I feel like other people do. And it's like, I said, hey, and I get a card and it's like, what, what am I supposed to do about that? And then like, also as like a club admin, I have to deal with the board. And then I go back and then that's something that comes up. They're like, man, Chris, you gotta watch getting those cards. And it's like, what can you do to win, you know? Like it's not something that happens like all the time for sure, but it definitely is a problem, I would say, like whether people realize it or not. Like another instance that this happened recently, I got a red card at a tournament, another card got a red, another guy got a red card at a tournament. He was a white guy. He's able to go talk to the head of officials, get the red card or send it. I never even had the option. And then a report gets done and it gets sent into USA Water Polo. And nothing ever happened to the other guy. Right? Like it's, stuff like that happens consistently. And you don't want to be like pulling the race card every time you feel like something's happening. But at a certain point, it gets to be to where it's a problem, or not a problem, it's noticeable, you know? And I just think that I don't think most refs are realizing that they're doing it, but they need to think before they're just going out and doing. And we should have some kind of training for all USA Water Polo members. I think about like racial bias and that whole thing.
I have to speak regarding Chris's, um, you went to school here, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So a lot of, and this is, and, and, and because people think they know you, they can go ahead and start pushing and pushing and pushing. And so you lose credibility every time. But what, what they don't seem to understand, and they, I'm not trying to, you know, isolate by any means, but it's, it's kind of why we're in this situation of, 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 oh, I don't see anything wrong with what I said. And I'm just going to go off. And that's not right. We have to establish a dialogue. And, and, and Chris, I agree that, you know, because I'm, I'm, I'm age dropping forty and I, I, I was a younger, uh, coach where just because I'm young doesn't mean I'm dumb nor inexperienced. So it's the tolerance level. And, and I think that here, being an outsider, being a, a Cali guy, you know, we don't like that around here. And you know, it's like, come on, polo's polo, in and out, through and through. So you know, that, that's something that for sure, I, I understand. And it's just like, we, we, we gotta have, you know, people willing to, to make that change and to say, hey, Chris, you, you're, you're no different than this other individual. And even getting the chance, just the chance to speak, that's what I'm upset about. You weren't given the chance. And, and, and I got the same thing, you know, as an up and coming, um, coach and, and, and going to a new area from California to Florida, from Florida back to Cali, Cali to Texas. It, it's, it's, it's all on, hey, you're an outsider. We don't like this. Change is hard. And I'm sorry you had to go through that. It's like, ah. So, and you're doing a good job at your club.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I think there's definitely a Texas specific problem that I'm seeing because we're such a, I don't want to say, it's not a small water polo community, but it's a very tight-knit water polo community. Um, and so we start to get really comfortable, like Edwin was saying. And, um, those microaggressions that come up all the time, those little things that, you know, for me, it's always something about being Asian, the little tiny things that kind of come off as like, hey, we're comfortable, we're friends now, so we're allowed to say this. And then if I were to get defensive, it's like, you know, you can't even get defensive because people start thinking you're crazy for getting defensive over such small comments. It's just a small joke. And so it's, it's really important that we start kind of becoming a lot more self-aware. Just because you're comfortable with someone doesn't give you the right to treat someone terribly or just be funny with someone. And it's so hard to react to that. You don't know how to react because you can't get crazy. You can't get mad. You, you also can't get sad. And so you just sit there and take it. And then when we talk about these things, someone says, why did you sit there and take it? And then we're crazy if we're sitting there and taking it. So we kind of feel trapped. I also wanted to point out, Chris, you had a, a moment talking about like, feeling that trappedness of like, part of you wants to quit. Like there's many times in this, in this, in this sport where I'm like, I'm, I, I want to be done. But then I get really, I'm like, why am I being forced to make a decision about quitting? Because one, if I quit, then I'm giving in and then I, I'm just like allowing them to win. But then why is it on me to be the fighter? Why do I always have to be the warrior? Why can't I just live my life and play water polo or ref water polo? And so, um, yeah, it's definitely, uh, it's such a bigger problem than just, you know, individual things. But on the, on the interpersonal level, I think one thing that we can start being a little bit more self-aware of is that being comfortable, you know? What does comfort mean? Is, are you, are you comfortable or are you making the other person comfortable?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, a, a, a thing I like doing, um, especially with coaching a lot of younger kids, is simply just, whenever you force them to kind of like, hey, you need to start going to tournaments or whatever, you force them to kind of get together, like, hey, we are all riding in the team van. That way, I mean, I'm, there were multiple times when I'm driving and I'll hear something and I will, I will just pull over a little bit. I'll, I'll call up whoever's following me, be like, hey, drive ahead. You know, I'm, I'm going to talk to the kids real quick. And I just have to like talk to them real quick. Be like, hey, listen, like, you are going to be around a bunch of people and you can't be saying stuff inappropriate, you know, um, you know, it might not affect you, might not affect anyone in this van. But at the same time, um, you know, you have to realize what you're doing. Cause you're not only reflecting on yourself, reflecting on the club, reflecting on me as a coach, reflecting on your parents, on how they raised you. So it's, it's one thing I like doing, especially when we go to like JOs. Those kids are stuck in a van and playing with their teammates. You know, some of them have been playing for a couple of years and some of them, this is their first JO. You know, being in an environment like that, so they get to open up and, you know, there's a little tiffs here and there. Uh, but I mean, they eventually have to solve it out. So like anytime, like I can try to get like a new kid, like, hey, come try, come try a travel tournament. You know, ride with your parents a couple, first couple of times, then, uh, come ride in the van. And, and, um, that way I can see how they open up and how everyone else opens up. Cause and, and that time, like it's, it's a teaching moment. Like it's a time for them to be like, oh, like, I, I can always say this around my certain group of friends. And now I have this other kid and I just said it and all of a sudden he like shuts down. So it's like, hey, you know, I won't call it out immediately. Sometimes on occasion, after we get to location, I will pull that child aside and be like, hey, listen, what you said was very inappropriate. I feel like you should apologize, but I want you to do it on your own terms. Don't make it obvious. Cause of course the younger they are, then they get all nervous and then it becomes a weird situation. But I mean, I, I like to, you know, cause I mainly coach fourteen youth. So I mean, they're still developing at that point in time. You know, the younger they are, they don't really see black and white, you know? The younger they are, they're just really in the water, just trying to breathe and survive. But as they're getting to that fourteen-year-old age, fifteen-year-old age, that's whenever, you know, they start developing a little bit more, getting a little more aggressive, not really thinking before, uh, they're speaking. So I mean, that's just something I like to do on occasion.
Now Angelo, uh, we have a question from the chat from Zion Thomas. Uh, it's, it's, uh, being a black water polo player, I face lots of racism in the aquatic world. I've tried to always, uh, take opportunities, yeah, to teach others. How can I encourage my sister to keep playing despite those comments? Open for the group.
Yeah, I, I read that in the chat. I, I kind of wanted to talk about that. It's, it's hard. It is. Uh, I, I didn't necessarily, growing up necessarily experienced so much like racism in water polo per se. It was more USA swimming or like swimming in general. I think that has its own toxic culture in, in and of itself. But like, it, I feel like if you, if you just continue to be the best player you can be, your game is going to speak for itself. Like you can prove people wrong. And that's, that's ki- that kind of fueled me going through maybe my junior high and a little bit of earlier high school years where I felt like I was being wronged by some coaches. I was being wronged by some people. And you can kind of, that energy is going to be there from the outside, that negative energy is going to continue to come after you, like no matter what level you're at. But if you're able to build a strong mind and you're able to take that energy and channel it into being the best player you can be, the best person you can be and being able to set an example for other players, then that's what's really going to keep you going. That's, that should be a motivation for you. And if someone continues to do, to throw racist things at you, you should have the, the freedom of mind to stand up to them or to talk to someone who has the power to put them in their place. Uh, don't be afraid to talk to your head coach. Don't be afraid to talk to a referee if something is going on. Talk to Joe, talk to an administrator, somebody who has the power. You make sure you let them know exactly what's going on and that should be corrected. And if it's not, that's, that's another issue that, um, can be dealt in another way.
I, I, I'm faced with those sort of, uh, questions all the time with our kids, especially, uh, whether it be swimming or water polo, because, uh, the Rio Grande Valley is still considered behind in the world of aquatics. And so, um, I feel like the, the, the answer that I give my swimmers, uh, it could be echoed to, to your sister Zion. I, I would tell her that she's got, in a sense, um, she's got a, a sense, in a sense, she has a duty to do this, to continue and persevere through the adversity. Uh, because it's up to her and other people like her to, uh, break the barriers as well as, uh, the stereotypes that exist. And, uh, and the labels that they place upon people of color. Because if not her, then who's going to do it, right? Uh, are we going to just wait around for the next person to do it, uh, for the next hero to come along? And, um, and I think that, that that's something that really kind of, uh, resonates with them. Because when they got that sense of duty, that it's, it's beyond just themselves and their daily little things that, that they go through or the daily grind of practice or whatever, uh, it's, it's, it's a far bigger picture. It makes them realize that even though now that it's difficult, they may be making it a lot easier for others that come after them, including their children, right? Uh, and other people that, that are going to be part of this community. And so, uh, that's the only way that we can really get ahead, uh, with the, the pioneers in the sport, right? The people that are going to have to take the hits and keep going so that the people behind them, it's not going to be as much friction. It's not going to be as, as difficult for them. So that sense of duty is really important, uh, to instill in, in, in the, in the younger generation, I think.
Yeah, I listen to it. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. No, no, no. I was just going to say, I agree with everything that is being said, but we do have to acknowledge that our system is broken. If people cannot communicate that they're being discriminated against, um, if Chris can't tell somebody that he was unfairly treated, like it, it's broken, right? And that's what this task force that I'm coach sharing, um, is, is going to try and look into, like putting in systems where you can file agreements of some sort, or you can make it. Like Zane was saying, like tell an administrator, tell a referee, tell a coach, you know, write it down, put it in writing. Like we, we need to know these things are happening. Um, I think there's part of our membership of USA Water Polo that says, there's no racism in aquatics. And we know that's a lie, right? If it's in society, it's in our sport. So we need to be able to create that. And I, and, um, I just wanted, I know there was a question in the, in the Q and A box about like training and stuff. So, um, that is something that the task force is looking at, like our four overall goals are zero tolerance for, for racism, access, right? Increasing participation, um, for POC, athletes that are, that identify as POC, education, um, curriculum. How do we train everyone from our board to our USA Water Polo leadership, to parents, to referees? Everyone needs to go through some sort of training. So that's a part of what we're looking at and also resources. How do we expand our resources? And access is something that I've always been, um, interested in because of the program that I grew up in. The city of commerce offers, um, free access to aquatics. And I know that that's unheard of, but I think that's the reason that I was able to become a four-time Olympian and an Olympic champion. You know, so I know that's important. I tried to do, to create a program in East Menlo Park in California, in local communities. So we are going to need all of you that are in separate cities, trying to create these little programs to help with this access and representation matters, right? They need to see themselves in their coaches and their referees. And I know it's a big ask, right? Because we're, we're facing all these microaggressions, there's racism, but we need to stay in the game. We need to find a way to support each other to stay in the game. So all those younger kids see us and they say, I do belong in this sport. And then it's, you know, USA Water Polo's job, like the task force's job to kick it off where we do make it a more inclusive sport and start shifting the culture so people want to come to our sport.
If I can, I just have a question for that. So you said like during the four points, you wanted to like add in people of color. Is that what you said?
Yes, that is with, with the access, right? We want to increase diversity. We know.
So like how?
Diverse.
Right. So how would you, I guess, go about that? Because I think that's really interesting. Because when I first started in the area that I did it, it's mainly like white people. So I like remember very clearly my first practice, like walking in and being like, oh wow, like, I'm the only like non-all-white one. And it's not that it like affected me, but it's something that's very like, you can always tell. So it's always in the back of your mind and it's like harder to make friends and it's like harder to gain your confidence, I think. So I just was wondering like what you would.
So it did affect you, right? If, if it affected your confidence, that's a problem. So we're going to need partnerships. We're going to need to partner with every zone that's part of USA Water Polo. Like we can't do it alone, but some of it is how can we identify areas where we can maybe have club teams partner with, with these local communities? How do we sponsor different communities? How do we give equipment? How do we equip coaches with just, with knowledge, right? Like I know that the little, the club team that I started in East Menlo Park, I had African-American girls. They needed bigger swim caps. Their caps fell off. If they had their hair done, right? Like their parents are like, we're not going to get in the pool. Like, you know, they, my, she just got her dreads going and I don't want her in the pool. And it's like, okay, there isn't a cap that fits. So like this, these are all things that I was learning along with the community. So these are things that we can share with other communities. And if we don't have that basic knowledge, we're not going to retain the athletes that try our sport. So there are a lot of things in the works. Of course, if anybody has ideas, suggestions, we're all open for it, but we are going to need partnerships and we are exploring like a lot of different avenues. But you do need partnerships and you do need funds. So we're trying to partner locally across the US to make this happen.
One last thing for Zion's question too, in terms of encouraging your sister. One of the things that I, I realize is, uh, is what Jonathan was saying is that as, as a woman of color and a referee, it's pretty rare to see that. And, um, I remember I was at a really big tournament and I was like, I have no business being here. I don't know how I got invited. I was so nervous. And um, I remember I was at a really big tournament and I was like, I have no business being here. I don't know how I got invited. I was so nervous. And I was just walking around doing roster checks and I just overheard some girls, some college girls going, oh dang, there's a lot of women at this tournament. There's a lot of women of color. Heck yeah. And I was like, yeah, no, I deserve to be here. Like that, that's, and so her presence, your sister's presence in itself gives not just each other, like her peers, the confidence, but it gave me confidence. And I'm the adult. I'm the person in power in that situation. And it's that idea of like, as people of color, we need to start encouraging each other, like, like giving the nod at tournaments, like, hey, I see you. Like we're both here, you know? It, it, it makes such a big difference to just be able to see someone like um, whenever I see a Japanese name on a roster, I always pointed out, I'm like, hey, are you Japanese? Me too. And just being able to connect with that person for that split second, even though, you know, they seem as a referee, they might be like, ooh, I don't like her. But at that split second, to be able to say, you know, we're, we're both humans here and we both experience certain things and I want to have that connection with you makes a difference. And so if there are people of color out there who are uh, listening to this panel, I hope you're doing just, you know, doing that same work. That is a form of activism. Just your presence is activism on the pool deck right now because there's so few of us. So wanted to give out that encouraging note. But Brenda did a really good segue into the systemic level. What needs to change at a bigger level? And yeah.
I have a question, I guess, for Brenda. Um, do you think that people are really aware of the history of swimming and of, and division in America? Uh, or pools, pool access in America? I think that's a very basic thing that could be taught to people. A lot of people uh, that, that they need to know and to kind of get an understanding of why it's not as popular in the African-American community. Because they couldn't actually get to pools. They couldn't step in pools. And you even see in Dallas a few years ago, when they go to a pool party, it's a huge deal, like. So um, I think that that's a very basic thing that needs to be taught from the beginning to kind of get an understanding of what's the kind of the psyche around uh, why there is kind of a dearth, particularly of, particularly of African-Americans um, in swimming and water polo.
Um, I know that there's this great like slide deck that's been going viral on social media accounts about the history of aquatics and racism. So I'm happy to share. We have a link with a document that has like resources. So I think these are conversations that could be happening now, right? At the club level, like if everyone looked at those slides and you ask these guided questions as a group, like what do you think? Like does, is this something that was on your radar? And this is how you open the conversations. Cause I know that I've never had like a race conversation with any of my club teams and I should be having that at my high school level. I should be having that with my 12 and under um, Mavericks team that was so diverse, right? But I just figured that by coaching them and treating them all the same and like setting this example that that would be enough. But I think these conversations need to happen. And I'm happy to share that slide deck. Yes, please.
I just did, BB. I just did. Uh, sorry, my apologies. Thank you guys for having me. It's great to see so many people on here. It's also great to see so many people of color on here. I can't tell you out. I've been smiling this whole time, even though I've been hiding in, in, in the back here, but my, my kids are running around and I had to take them to some classes too, but this is a wonderful thing. And Zane too, it's first of all, it's great to see you, brother. It's been a long time.
Yeah, likewise, likewise.
Zane made the biggest mistake of his life when he go to Bucknell University in uh, 2008. Just want everybody to remember that. But um, he could have been coached by a man of color. We could have had this conversation back then together, uh, but we're having it 12 years later. In your, in the chat, right? In the chat, it, I put the slides that Brenda's talking about. So um, I'll be brief. Those slides are huge. Um, and it gives instructions on how to repost it. So to your point, Zane, about this education, this is the most poignant education you can get on racism and aquatics directly about access to facilities. And the people, the, the young women who phenomenal job of putting this together, um, have put instructions on how to post this on social media and how to give them credit for it, right? And how to give them credit. I would recommend, especially because we're talking to um, the Texas zone, that if you guys start doing it, then your followers in Texas will get it. It's kind of caught viral, different, it's caught, it's gone viral in different spaces, but it has to get viral geographically, right? To make it work. And so in your geographic area, this, this can get real viral real fast. It's real easy to read. But in, and I'll be very brief because I know I've been enjoying listening to everybody else talk, you know, is that this access and this history, the systemic piece of this is massive. I mean, this is huge. And people love to think that this is somehow a long time ago. That people like to think that Jim Crow segregation, this is, oh, this is a century ago, right? All of us are directly connected to the systemic racist issues that have affected aquatics right now, right? That means people like us, our parents don't know how to swim, right? Well, why do our parents don't have some? Because they weren't allowed in the pool, right? Why do our parents don't know how to swim? Or why do our parents maybe have a stigma about wanting us to swim or people in them? Because they think it's not for us. So I think it has to be addressed. And I can't tell you how many people, when we're talking about the stomach stuff, will say that they're shocked. They're surprised, right? Like, wow, I, I had no idea, right? That pools are segregated, that beaches were segregated. And you know, I posted this on my social media as well, a good one, just to kind of again, break the, it's been helpful in California because there's so many surfers in California, maybe in, in other parts that this documentary called Whitewash, um, but it's narrated by Ben Harper and the score is done by The Roots. So enjoyable to listen to, right? If you like hip-hop and you, and you um, enjoy Ben Harper's soothing voice. But it discusses and directly addresses the segregation and the issues on aquatics and racism through the lens of surfing. So if people are like, hey, this is boring. I don't know. At least it's a very um, uh, easily digestible way of addressing the issue right away. And you could have a party with your team. It's so um, benign that if you could have a high school, if you're coaching a high school team right now, you could show that documentary, you know, as a, as a part, especially if you got no pool access at the moment. So Gary, hey, everybody watch this and let's talk about it afterwards, right? So it's a, um, anyway, I can go on forever, but that's uh, um, whitewash and those, those, check your chat for those slides.
I have something kind of going off of that. And I, I think it's interesting when you say that we need to have these conversations. But I think part of the issue is the fact that some people, like as people of color, we're used to talking to like our parents about how do I handle something when this happens to me? Or how should I react? And I think for a lot of people, not necessarily not people of color, but they're not comfortable talking to us. And so I think it's important to start a dialogue of like, well, if you, if you think something, why do you think that? And maybe I can help you understand. And I think there's such a stigma against also having race conversations that it gets kind of tabooed. So like if, if we try to introduce something into the race conversations, I was like, oh, well, I don't want to bring race into it because that's a touchy subject. So now when we're trying to explain ourselves, we're trying to explain why we feel this way about things, people are saying they're like, oh, I don't want to talk about it because it makes me uncomfortable. And it's like, well, how are we going to move past this if we can't even have a conversation? So I think that was part of the question I see from Karen. I think that's one of the things that when I was coaching, I would talk to my kids about, like, if you don't understand something from one of your teammates, like you don't have to be rude, but you can just ask them like, hey, I was just wondering why this? And it shouldn't be something we discourage between our teammates or our kids. Like they can talk to each other or if they're uncomfortable, they can ask a parent. I just think it's something that's not brought up all the time. It's hard to have that conversation when other, the other party is like, oh, I'm uncomfortable with it.
I think we need to start seeing race is not something that's a touchy subject because then what does that communicate to people of color? That your identity in itself is a touchy subject, which is a huge deal. And so part of what we need to start changing is being able to be comfortable talking about race and not seeing it as a political issue, but literally we, it, it is our life. It's our identity. And that needs to be part of the conversation in every avenue that we do. Um, it should be just as comfortable as we talk about age in water polo. Um, and so, um, yeah.
Yeah. And I, I think if, if we don't have those conversations, just think about like, who are we protecting if we're not having those conversations? We're protecting the people who have views that are probably alternative, right? Probably racist, probably um, you know, that would probably would say things that would make someone of color feel uncomfortable. And so I guess the only way we would really know who we're talking to or we would even try to educate people is if we have those conversations and if we are able to talk with each other and if we are able to have that, that understanding between one another. So I, I totally agree with what uh, everyone is saying.
I, I, I'd like to chime in on that one as well. Um, it's, it's, it's certainly establishing the, the dialogue and, and, and that's something very important. But to, to understand perspective and to understand point of views when certain people don't want to, you know, they just don't want to go there. And essentially is it the fact that they don't want to go there because they don't like change? And that's, I mean, you know, th- there's, there's, there's so many great quotes out there, but one to me is, that, that sticks out is babies aren't born racist. They're not. Hate isn't, you're not born with hate. It's taught. And, and I think now we're in a, in an age where, you know, people would look the other way and, 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 oh, I didn't see that, or it doesn't affect me. Well, now, now it does. Now I'm making it to where, look, it's enough. And you know, again, my upbringing is different. But you know, I, I, I have to deal with, with certain individuals in my life that, that inspired me. You know, from, from, from my father, um, from people that struggle through adversity. I, I, I mean, there's, there's, there's so many things that, that for sure can can combine, can, can bring us together, then separate us. And until we knock down those walls, because again, we have more in common than we do not have in common. And it's again, being in the bubble, safe to, to do that. I mean, to, to Zion's sister's point, I want to give you a great example of why you should continue. Ashley Johnson. I was fortunate to live in South Florida at the time of this woman, black woman's upcoming through, you know, her South Florida, I mean, the whole family, its support, you know? But again, that's one person because they go to bed at night. You're not there 24/7. And in her, her, her strength, I think she would say would be coming from her family. And as long as you have your big bro Zion representing, doing his thing. And you see referees like myself on the deck or even as a coach on the deck, know that I understand. Know that, you know, you have someone in a sea of people that don't look like you. You have that one. Or now you see Zane, or now you see Ahmad on the deck. Those are people you can walk up to, say, hey, my name is, and you gave me some advice. Those are the things that, that to me, help the generation proceed and evolve. Cause we're living in a very great time of evolution. And I know it's scary, but like in the sixties, it was scary. In the seventies, it was scary. But unfortunately, we're moving forward and this evolution, huh, it's happening. And, and either you're on it or unfortunately, like the Tyrannosaurus Rex, you're going to be extinct.
Um, I have a que- like go, kind of going off of what Edwin was saying, um, how, so like for me personally, and I heard a few other people saying this, like it was important to see somebody who looked like me, like be successful in the water polo world. Uh, and so like, I know for me personally, like when I was playing and learning in high school, like Zane meant like the world to me when he would come and like coach us in the summers. Like it was just nice to have, you know, like I could look and like, you know, like we, like I recognize you, like, you know? And like now as a, like now that I'm coaching and like I, that's kind of what I want to go into. Uh, like Chris Vidal at Marist and Teddy at Harvard are like huge influences to me. And it like Teddy like actually stopped and talked to me for five minutes on the last day of J O's, like before he rushed out. And like, I'm sure he doesn't even remember it, but that meant the world to me that like, he stopped, recognized another person of color. And like went and like came and spoke to me. So I just wanted to know if anybody else on the panel, like who is somebody of color? Somebody who looked like you that like kind of kept you going, uh, somebody that you respected? Anybody? So open.
Um, I'll go. I mean, um, I didn't start playing water polo until I was a junior in high school. And it wasn't even like a, I wanted to do it. They advertised it as you can get out of doing swimming off-season if you come try this. And so I was like, bet I'll be there because swimming off-season is the worst. And that was, let's see, that was getting ready to go into the Olympics in 2012. And I remember tuning in and there's, there's Brenda and she's there and like, I was like, oh my gosh, someone who looks like me. And my mom and I just, I remember watching, putting it on the TV and I was like, someone I can connect to is right there. I've been playing the sport for like 11 months, but I don't know what's going on, but I'm here to support the lady that looks just like me. And it was great. But yeah, so that's me.
Uh, easy for me. I mean, there's two, there's two guys, uh, Janakir and Omar Amr. Like those Egypt, Egyptian and African-American, I got both on the same team at one time. I'll never forget like going to Long Beach. They had like a, they had a game, I think against like Hungary one time. And just like being able to see them in person was like the biggest experience for me. I think I was like a freshman or sophomore in high school. Um, and then obviously building a relationship with Janai every once in a while, whenever he would come to Texas. He's always, always remembers you, always would say her name and always would just be so nice and um, respectful and just, just an amazing personality. And I think that that's someone who I definitely a hundred percent lift up to.
Zane, you, you mentioned an alumni of Sunny Hills High School, Janai, I mean, excuse me, Omar Amr. I, first, the guy who got me in it, always my number one guy, my older brother. He was the reason why I did it. Montebello High School, he was in Euler, class of 96, well, he didn't graduate, he graduated from Hills, but he got in as a freshman. I, you know, here it is, 1990, I'm going in. And then we moved to Orange County, where it totally turned on me, where I was in a Hispanic community going to now Sunny Hills High School, predominantly white. But the kick is Sunny Hills, the attendance, 70 to 80% Asian. So my dude, we had 70% Asian, the remainder was either white and then Hispanic and then like black. Okay. But Omar Amr, my dude comes in, he's, this is 96 Olympics, like, oh my God. And, 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 and he ends up, you know, he's training squad, then he makes it 2000 and I'm just like, oh my God, this is insane. So he, my brother and Omar, but that's funny. See how it all ties together?
And I remember a story about like Omar Amr going to like law school and like flying back to like uh, to national team practices. Yeah, medical school, yeah. And flying back, like back and forth across the country. That was like, that's like a dream for me. So yeah.
I could, I could tell you guys, look, just to clarify real quick, so we get our facts straight, uh, because I went to a college with Omar, right? And so he's, he's uh, he's my brother. So it was the '04 Olympics, Edwin, right? So he represented us in 2004. Um, it was Harvard Medical School, right? That he went to, he was flying on Friday nights. So he would go Monday, you know, he'd go Sunday night, red eye, um, to Boston, Sunday night, red eye. Go to, go to med school, Monday through, Monday through Friday, get on the Friday flight, back out to Los Alamos. Train and then do, and rinse and repeat. Another part about Omar and that sign, just since we're on Omar and his heroism, because I, I agree with it, I agree wholeheartedly because he's uh, a hero and a brother, but he um, he got cut several times in that process. Coach um, Rocco Rudich told him he would never make the team. Rocco told him he was too short. He told him he was terrible, right? You're never going to do this. Don't show up. Omar would do all of that and then he would show up and he would win, he would just jump in the pool. And Rocco would be like, did I cut you yesterday? Like, what are you doing in the, in the pool? Why are you in the water? And Omar would win the swim set. And he'd be like, I'm not leaving. I'm going to do the swim set. And Rocco's swim sets are legendary, right? Of how hard they are and how, what they were like. And Omar would win the swim set and he'd win again. And he just persisted and persisted and persisted until, you know, he, he, he made, obviously made that '04, the '04 games. He, what he does is um, his story is one that in, as part of my personal project and in all of this, as we're dealing with systemic and policies and tell you that his story has got to be one that's going to be told a lot, right? To people. It's going to be told a lot. And then another, another person for you guys, and I'm going to, I'm going to put a bunch of links in here on the side here. So I already put the link to the racism uh, in Aquatics docs from our, our Yale women. Um, I put the link to um, uh, Whitewash, the documentary. I'm going to put a link to uh, a podcast that you guys mentioned Teddy already and Felix Mercado and myself did with um, Tony Azvedo. If you guys haven't heard that one yet, I think it's an important resource for, I'll plug that in. And then I'll plug in another, a, a plug in a story about Max Irving. Uh, while I find it, while, while this is like, because I think Max is the next person for you guys to be telling your kids about, telling stories about and kind of. get in that mix as well. So, um, representation matters, it matters a lot, right? And having these, uh, these athletes there and letting them know that they're out there is, is, is big. So I appreciate hearing those stories, but I certainly wanted to set the record straight about, about Omar, you know? Um, as we tell his story, as we repeat his story, but please keep going, I'll plug these links.
Tom brings up a good point too about representation is that, um, we often, I often hear at least, um, from some colleagues that, you know, I'm not being racist, you know, I'm, I'm not teaching racism. But the problem is that if you're not teaching anti-racism, then you are teaching racism. Because the norm, the system itself is broken, so that just by being the norm right now, you are being racist. And so that, and that's a hard reality, that's a hard pill to swallow, is that we have to go out of our way, because the system is so messed up, to teach histories that are specific to people of color and to bring up these stories and celebrate these people that we're talking about. And it, and it feels like fangirling, I know Morgan just said to me, she's like, I'm fangirling, I'm also fangirling Brenda. Because the idea is that like, it, it's a huge deal for us. I remember seeing Brenda and then also I was like, oh, I'm also short too. So I was like, I have representation here, you don't have to be, you know, six two to, you know, make it. And so this idea that you have to have these people, and now as, as a referee, actually, it's not the older, like people that I'm seeing, like the mentors actually, that inspire me to keep going, it's the younger girls. It's, it's the, it, like when I saw commerce, I was like, that is so cool. Like in what universe have we seen a team that is predominantly people of color? Uh, and so to have that, I, I know, like when I go to O D P and stuff, I'm like pointing out in my head, I'm like, oh, that girl's Asian, that's so exciting. Like I never get to see, uh, Asian girl at this level. I remember feeling like I would never make it to O D P. And now I'm seeing all these girls pop up and so we have to go out of our way if we want systemic change. Each, us, each of us individually need to start having those conversations intentionally, even if it makes you uncomfortable. It should, it should be uncomfortable, you should be upset that we're not used to this already. It should be something that we just talk about normally, but it's not. And so, um, yeah, that's a really great question, Chris. I'm really glad that we're able to celebrate all these people here.
I still have to say, the, the time of, oh, I'm gonna walk away. Oh, I, I don't see this. Oh, it doesn't affect me. It affects you, it affects maybe not you directly as a one person. But man, there's like seven people on this, on this panel. And if, if it affects one, that's, 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 that's your circle, that's our circle. And we can't allow that. Kind of like, I don't want to mention the whole Confederate flag thing, I don't get it, I don't get it. I mean, seriously, I'm married, I'm gonna have a picture of my girlfriend who I broke up with in the, no, it doesn't make any sense. So it's like, we gotta evolve, we gotta evolve.
And so as we, oh, sorry, Zane, did you want to jump?
Oh, I, you know, I, I went to high school, I, I grew up in Texas, obviously, right? And went to high school there and I, I think we talk about like, uh, Texas history and Texas education doesn't necessarily do a great job. Or, uh, they don't do a great job of teaching, uh, diversity, they don't take, do a great job of teaching about even slavery or civil rights. So I think, you know, it's hard to just have kids go through your program and not have any idea of like what's going on socially. I think you kind of, you kind of are doing a disservice if, if you're, if you're not, uh, providing some type of, of, of input or providing some type of, uh, education to them, uh, that's outside of water polo, because water polo is not life. Um, it's a microcosm of life in some points, but because it's not as diverse, it's really not. Uh, so I think in Texas specifically, we could definitely do a better job of educating our kids in that, in that sense. Um, and even when it comes to the water polo ring.
Yeah, Zane, I, we just celebrated a Juneteenth. That's huge. Why? Because Texas is the center, is the pinnacle of how Juneteenth even happened. It was in Galveston, you Houston people, here's some pride right here. Galveston and, and me being a transfer from California and learning like, two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was done by Lincoln, did they just find Union soldiers in Galveston to tell everyone, hey, slavery is over? That's huge, that's huge. I mean, on top of the Alamo, I mean, Texas is so rich in history, so rich. It's a beautiful, rich history of, of diversity. I mean, look, in the Alamo, people coming together for one cause. Here it is, Galveston, gives me goosebumps, just knowing that Galveston holds such an important timeline in, 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 in this, in, in equality. I mean, that was just awesome to me and I told my kids that. I said, do you know how special it is to live in Houston? Here it is. So that's awesome.
I will say we do have one strength in Texas is that, um, because we grew up i- in knowing, uh, a lot of the, the bad history of the South. We, it, we are able to kind of point to and say, hey, this is a real thing. I know California has a bigger challenge because they're like, oh, we're liberal and we get to, you know, we get to pretend like we're all not racist there. Um, and so in Texas, we're like, no, it's definitely happening here and it's real blatant. Uh, and so i- it's, I think the conversation starts off a little bit more naturally and a little bit more easier. Um, and so, um, I hope we can use that to our advantage. I know it's not a fun reality that we face in Texas, that it is, that it's so blatant, but it's still something that we can now take and use as a tool and say, hey, it's in our face and we're gonna, we're gonna make sure we talk about it. Um, and so, uh, I, I don't, I, I definitely don't envy the people in California and, and starting the conversation about race, because often the conversation is, oh, I'm not racist. When in Texas, it's, yeah, I'm racist, what are you gonna do about it? So, um, it's a different experience for sure. Um, given that, uh, kind of hard to segue into, what would your ideal future for water polo be? Like if everything became roses and we had all the funding that we needed, we had all the systemic changes, what would it look like?
Like every Olympics in the world, beautiful.
For, for Texas, I'll keep it Texas specific, uh, because it's changing so much for me personally. Um, I think that I would love to see more high schools that are in inner cities involved. Uh, I look at Houston and the only team that I see that's, what I consider, I guess, the inner city or even within the city itself is, is Lamar High School. Uh, there's not enough participation. Uh, so I think, uh, water polo, putting themselves out there, going out into those communities and trying to recruit people or going to and building programs within those areas is, would be an ideal situation. And on top of that, having more universities involved, uh, that have programs where we can get scholarships and have kids going to college and keeping it within Texas, that's the only way that we're gonna allow, we're gonna get this pro, uh, this sport to build within those communities that aren't necessarily involved right now.
Uh, I think, uh, I, I'm gonna kind of play on that in terms of Texas. I would like to see more universities that pick up the sport, because I think if, uh, if it's picked up at the university level, it's gonna be a lot easier to pick it up at the, at the local level. And so the ideal situation would be where, you know, there's definitely more clubs that are affordable. Uh, in, um, you know, in communities that can't afford it, that are predominantly, um, you know, first, people of color communities. And, um, and of course, the Rio Grande Valley dominating, uh, Texas and in water polo, that would be ideal.
I, I think that, um, if, if, if everything was perfect, then we'd have a, 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 you know, like a, um, almost like a Sunshine States Games where all, kind of like they do in Florida, where they take the entire state and, and, and they have one big festival, because I mean, it's, it's Texas. We don't call it a tournament, it's a festival. And, and it's, you know, e- everyone's involved from, you know, all, all sorts. And, and again, money not being the problem, let's invite our neighbors to the south. Why not have some Mexican teams come over? That would be sweet. Or, 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 you know, try to bring some, some, something that's relatively close in. Cause I mean, you can't get any more diverse than that.
All right, well, I wanted to open it up just for any final questions, any additional questions from the panelists or for the panelists um, from the audio.
Now we have a couple of questions in the, in the Q and A. Uh, will anyone be reaching out and communicating how we might be involved? Will athletes' parents have opportunities to support this important and necessary change?
Yes, um, John and I are leading or co-chairing this task force. Once, um, we have our team set, that we will communicate how you guys can, um, help. Feel free to email John or I, I think there's a email that is getting set up. Um, for anybody that's interested in, in helping, we are gonna need different, um, collaborators or co-conspirators, as I keep hearing, right, along, um, the US to push this, this work forward. So there's always room for help or to help us. And I love the suggestion, there's a, or Thomas was saying about a D and I board, um, for the Southwest Zone. I mean, we, we're here to, we're kind of reviewing the system, right? What isn't working and what can work? So if that's something that you think, um, you'd like to be involved with, that we should have, like, please, ideas and support are gonna be important in all of this. John, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, no, for sure. I, I mean, I think, I think we have to, uh, delineate where, where help can come in. I think sometimes, uh, this, obviously we started this task force and we're gonna, it was just gonna, it's gonna take a long time to get off the ground. I would say the four points that Brenda brought up earlier that the task force is focused on, it's, it's really important, but I would look at, I would look at it as, um, you know, the most important thing that we have to address at USA Water Polo at a level, at a governance level is policy and procedure, right? So like the task force has to affect policy procedure. I heard earlier, while I was listening early on, people like hate stories and stuff that's happened that goes unreported, right? That goes unaddressed, that people aren't, and then not only do we need those policies and procedures, we need effective mechanisms for enforcement. And then you have to ma- uh, uh, effective mechanisms for reporting, right? So this is not unlike, you know, not to bring up, uh, awful things in our past, but the sexual abuse scandals that we went through. But the, the, what became, what came out of the sexual abuse issue was the Center for Safe Sport. Some, they've invested a twenty-two million dollar Center for Safe Sport that runs out of Colorado where people can address that. I, I think, not to say that I, we need a Center for Safe Sport that's twenty million dollars worth, right, happening on a national level, but you gotta have something, right? We have to have something that helps enforce this along the way. So there's gonna be the policy and procedure piece. So I wouldn't, uh, in terms of if you're raising your hand, you're saying, I want to help. There's gonna be, there's spots on the task force, but that's really just to push the, the policy through. Where we need from everybody is to affect change at the very local and specific level that's happening. Which I'm so thrilled that you guys are having this conversation at the, on the Southwest Zone level. Yeah, po- probably somebody, somebody from your zone is gonna help us push the policy forward. But what's happening in your communities, like what, what Jonathan, what you're doing in your area, right? And what everyone's doing in their specific areas that help grow the sport at this very grassroots level is really, really important. And so I think when people ask like what they can do, I think it's, it's really important that your change has to affect the people that you're around first. And then it's, that's gonna have to have the micro, the macro and the micro level all at the same time, um, uh, pushing forward. So we need everybody's help to just start addressing this. And there's not a better time than immediately, because this is the time, like, I'll say, I'm, another thing that makes me excited slash depressed at the same time, right, is a lot of these conversations that you guys are talking about. Right now, we've maybe been holding them in for so long, right? Or we haven't been able to talk about them. But it feels a little cathartic to just get this all out right now. So people have to listen, you know, so people are, are being forced to listen in, in authority positions, not just in the water polo world, but in every company in America, right? So I mean, if NASCAR is going to create a brand new position for a VP of diversity and inclusion, um, I think we can push for certain changes on, on our level as well, right? So I'll just use that example. So you can hear my son yelling at me in the back, let me, uh, I'll keep going, but yes, everybody can help.
I also think the things that we could do, uh, to, to, you know, promote this sort of diversion inclusion is to attend, uh, to attend tournaments that are hosted by, by, uh, clubs and teams that, uh, you know, have more diversity in them. Cause for the most part, we always have to get out, like out of the valley to go and play. And if we host the tournament, no one's gonna come down here once, because, you know, we're still pretty new. And so they, they have the idea they're gonna come down here and just slaughter us, right? Um, uh, but also it, it would be a good idea to, to, to come and slaughter us, even if that's the case, uh, just to, uh, show legitimacy to the sport, uh, to show, um, uh, diversity in general, uh, if, not, not for, just for the sake of, of the communities up north in Texas, but for the valley as well. Because like I said, these kids have never left the valley and it's ninety-nine percent Hispanic. So they never get to see, you know, other races in general. So, uh, it would be a good thing for them as well, because I, there, there can be some reverse racism in our communities as well. You know, for instance, my wife is white and she grew up in the, in the, in the Rio Grande Valley. And she faced a lot of racism because she was the one white girl in the entire teen, in, in the entire school. So, so, uh, it, it happens as well. And I think it's important for our community to recognize that, that we can be racist as well. So, uh, with, with that said, we're gonna be, we're building a, a big nadatorium. Uh, it's actually this, the, the UT layout, so it's gonna be a big thing. And we're also building a couple of other pools, uh, you know, because of the support of, of our, our, our community. And, uh, the, you know, with the school board, our superintendent and, uh, the, the city council and the mayor here at the city afar, uh, they, they recognize that, uh, that aquatics is something that we can, uh, really kind of push for, for various reasons. Not just for, uh, you know, for extracurricular, but also to tackle, uh, issues of obesity and, uh, coronary heart disease, et cetera, et cetera. Just to get our kids active in general, because our, our community tends to be, uh, uh, facing those issues. And so, uh, if we have a big tournament, it'd be great if, if, uh, teams from around the state came down to support us and, and to promote diversity as well as, uh, to grow the sport.
Alrighty, well, if there's no, uh, final questions, Joe, is there one more?
Okay. There, there's a couple more questions in the Q and A. Do we have a Southwest Zone, uh, kind of D and I board? At this present time, we do not, but this is, again, this is the first step in hopefully many conversations. Um, and, uh, and then has anyone considered partnering with like Gulf Swimming to create kind of local programs to increase diversity? I do know there's efforts a- a- at the local level with, um, with clubs that are trying to work with their, uh, like their, their, their local communities. Um, and I am trying to work as far as at the statewide level, as far as getting as many people playing as possible in places where there currently is not, uh, like, kind of efforts, uh, where there's no current efforts, where there's not currently water polo being played. So open those up to anybody else. I mean, I, I think that's a very important piece, is to get as many people playing as possible, so.
I have one question for, I don't know, Brenda or John. Um, so like I know Wow Pack is a, like big thing for like women coaches, right? Um, has USA Water Polo ever thought about having like a people of color, uh, coaches get together, like instead of it being just for women, people of minority backgrounds or anything?
Well, Wow Pack is like an independent organization, but we could connect you with a group of, um, activated members of USA Water Polo that identify as P O C that are, that are putting together an alliance. Um, so we could connect you to that. So there is like working groups within USA Water Polo and then some members that are like, what can we do to help? And also, you know, push the envelope on our own, so we can connect you.
Yeah, Chris, send me a, send me a chat with your name and email. Uh, email us if you want. So look, the Wow Pack, Brenna's right, right? That's independent of USA Water Polo, it's a coach associ- it's a coach association started by women, for women, right? And they, and they're, and they're working that. I think out of this, you may have seen something out of, uh, ice hockey, another great guy to follow online. Uh, his name is Akim Alou, if you don't follow NHL, right? He, uh, um, he's, he, he started the, uh, uh, diversity for racial equity in ice hockey. And so based on kind of that model, uh, some of us have started one for, uh, water polo, right? Um, and he's, uh, it's, uh, it's happening, you know? Uh, but again, it's just like an independent group, something that's happened on the outside. And I think it's important that these, these types of, uh, groups come together. Um, to your point, Chris, of just like meeting and seeing other people that look like you who are in the sport, who are, you know, who have been through this for decades, right, and trying to, trying to keep the next generation going. So it's, uh, uh, I think, I think that's important. I think the other, the thing about the D and I, uh, question as well, uh, just to answer that, it's helpful with that. To be helpful on the other two questions would be, um, I, I don't know if you need a To be helpful on the other two questions would be, um, I, I don't know if you need a full board for the zone. Um, but I would, I would recommend, one recommendation that has come to the task force in this is that all zones maybe have a seat on their board specifically about D and I. Um, and that might be a more efficient way, right? To go about it instead of having a whole other group of people, right? But have somebody on the zone board who represents that. And if, um, so throwing that out there, Joe, for you guys, right? To think about maybe as leaders, maybe the Southwest Zone does that first before the people, you know, first, and we start adopting it with others. But that was, not necessarily, I'm not saying it's my idea, it's a great idea that came our way. And that's the whole point of the task force, right? Is that good ideas come and then we can filter the bad ones out and push out the good ones, right? And so it's a good idea to, to push out, I think, to, to the zones. Um, and I think the, the, I think USA Swimming, um, somebody said it earlier in the call too. USA Swimming has a pretty deep history of negativity. Zane, it was you. Yeah, man, it's, uh, it's there. Um, but that's not to say that, uh, you know, water polo is immune either, right? We have, I think we have a similar history where a microcosm that goes with it. But I think partnering with other organizations is, is going to be smart. And, uh, USA Swimming as a large organization has, uh, someone who's a, a manager of diversity and inclusion that works full-time uh, in, in there. And so not, not to say they're doing a good job, bad job, whatever, that it's there and it's something that we're in contact. And I could always connect if anybody needs to connect with that person, I'm happy to help, uh, make that connection for the zone as well.
I also would love to have some affinity groups here in Texas, whether, you know, having a group for women, having a group for people of color. Um, all of those different groups, having those safe spaces as well as using those safe spaces to have these braver conversations where it's not as, um, like protective and safe. Like there's times where we need a rant and sometimes we need to actually go out and like fight and, and, and do those things. And we need all of that. And so, um, creating those groups might be a good idea too for the Southwest Zone. Um, if there's nothing else, last call for real this time. Uh, I wanted to thank all the panelists. I mean, this is a huge conversation. This is like just the tip of the iceberg, honestly. Um, I'm sure there's lots of stories that we could, we could tell and talk about. Um, and it's a such a tough conversation to have. And I'm so thankful for all the people who decided to join us on this panel. Um, I am definitely gonna say this is the first conversation we're having about this, uh, as the Southwest Zone and not the last, definitely not. Um, and just so thankful for everyone here and thank you for being vulnerable and brave. Yeah. I'll turn it back over to Joe so he can handle the logistics of town hall meeting.